Welcome to Politics Done Right. I am your host, Egberto Willies. This is a progressive program that will take the mystery out of politics. This is the program that will encourage you to make sure government becomes we, the people. Whether you are liberal, progressive, conservative, or otherwise, you get to hear your point of view. We are an independent media outlet that unlike mainstream media beholden to corporations, we only owe allegiance to you. Remember, you can also send me a tweet at EGBERTOWILLIES. That is at Egberto Willies. Let us engage. It is Politics Done Right. Well, folks, welcome to one more edition of Politics Done Right. Egberto Willies, your host. Thank you so kindly for being a part of the show. Welcome aboard, everybody. Oh, you guys are kind of scarce right now. Where is everybody? Let's see, we've got Patrick Magnner is in the house. Meow, he says from Houston, Texas. We also have Michael Rudman. He says he's feeling better from the flu. He's in recovery. I'm resting today. Catch you tomorrow. Oh, we're gonna miss you, my brother. We're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss you. Yvette Avery Herod, our queen from Atlanta, Georgia, is in the house. Welcome, Yvette Avery Herod. How you doing today? Joe from Los Angeles, California is in the house. Welcome, Joe. We also have Breach MCP from Brigentum, New York, in the house. That's another part of New York. Lee Grant says, hey, y'all. Lee Grant from Montgomery County. And of course, Melanick Killen in from Barcelona, Spain. And we've got Jay Ray from Houston, Texas. Welcome aboard. Let's see if I can learn to scroll some of these on Substack. All I see on Substack is Rosalind. Carol Rosalind. Let's see if I can scroll down. They need to improve that interface on Substack because it's very hard to use. Anyway, folks, how are my peeps doing today? I trust everybody is doing fine. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. We have some good stuff for you today. Well, it seems like the Prime Minister of England, of Great Britain, I should say, knows exactly how to get to Trump. You just shower him with adoration. Get him to get an invite from the king to come to Great Britain. Give him all that he wants. Talk about how great he is and just watch Trump melt, melt. He can get anything from Trump that he wants. Watch Trump melt. But anyhow, there's a whole lot to talk about today. Before we get started, though, I want to play a video because this is what we need. Activism from the local school boards right up. Today, I'm going to play a video from that I did with one of our local school boards who got bored. Activists who got arrested, but she made sure to keep the challenge on, which is what we have to do. We can't only work on the federal level or the state level. The way a lot of MAGA got their power wasn't from the power of the people, but from the power of the engaged. And these people engaged on the local level, meaning school boards and municipal boards, all these things. They engaged until they grew up into state districts, Senate, state senate districts, and that's how they did it. And we have to, we have to learn that we have to engage as well. That is one of the reasons I was so happy to work, to interview Tammy, Sarah Terrell. And I want to play that now, and then we'll continue with the program. We have a lot to discuss on the other side. I'm going to start today with Sarah Terrell. Sarah Terrell is going to be calling into the program in a little bit. Sarah Terrell went ahead and she has been following the Houston Independent School District and all the shenanigans that's been occurring over there. And she is present at the meeting. She is a community activist who has always earned her wings by being a part of a system. Or be, I should say, by challenging the system when the system goes awry. She's a friend of mine, and I could not be more proud of her. You know, when the Houston Chronicle did an article about her, they called her a grandma gets. Well, we're going to talk about that. But she ain't look like no darn grandma. She's an activist out there working for all of us. She's not sitting back in despair. She's actually engaging and making a difference, and that's what we're going to talk about. So without further ado, let's go to Sarah Terrell. How you doing, Sarah? Welcome to Politics Done Right.
Thank you, Egberto. Thank you for having me on your show.
Well, look, let me tell you. First of all, I want to say we are all happy that you're out there, holding down the, one of, I mean, one of many people out there, but you're engaging in holding down the fort at HISC for all that it's doing. So first of all, in short, in short terms, tell me, what's the issue with the Houston Independent School District?
Well, we have been taken over by the state. That happened in June of 2023. So we no longer have any kind of electoral influence over what happens with our school district at all. And of course, the state put in their own superintendent, Mike Miles, who we've all heard of by now. And he's using HISC as the giant lab for his giant experiment in education reform. And his brand of education reform is that he believes that children are widgets that produce test scores. And he can mass produce these widgets using the same, the same process for every single widget. So every single student is subjected to exactly the same sort of mass-produced learning experience. And it takes individuality out of the classroom for both the teachers and the students. And of course, I know everybody's heard about this by now, but the first thing that he did was take the libraries out of the schools that he used as the targets for his new model, learning model, which he calls New Education System, or NES, if you've heard that term. And nothing really could be more symbolic than the loss of the libraries, the loss of that creative space of sharing knowledge in a creative way. So that's how he views.
Now, Sarah, didn't he convert the libraries into detention centers?
Yes, but more like study halls. Originally, it was called, they were called detention centers, and then they changed it to learning centers. But basically, there are study halls where the kids are completely quiet and they work on worksheets. And that's so kind of like the kind of study halls that you go to for being punished.
Now, isn't it also true that his model, he's tried it in a voucherized system in Colorado, and I think certain parts of Texas, and they were not resounding successes at all?
Well, and I don't think they're voucherized in Colorado that I know of, when he has the charter school system that he started.
I meant charter. That's what I meant. Charter, yeah.
Yeah, after he was kicked out by the elected board of trustees in Dallas ISD in like 2012 or 2013, he went off to Colorado and started a charter school system. And I do believe he uses basically the NES style learning mode at his charter schools. And no, they're not that successful because in Colorado, they're losing students to the point where they were losing money. And so that's when I think many people have read by now that his Texas branch, which is newer and so hasn't started losing money yet, was basically sending money over to Colorado to keep it afloat. So that was, that's been quite a scandal. That Texas taxpayer dollars intended to land in Texas schools and be used to help Texas students were flowing across to Colorado. Just to keep Colorado schools from going under.
Now, Sarah, one of the things is that we can sit down here and complain about all these things that are happening within the school district and just be victims, or we can actually do something about it. And one of the things that I respect about you and others, in the case I'm featuring you, because again, something happened recently that is we're talking about. And that is, you went there as you normally do to listen to them, and you had a few choice, not bad words, but choice words for them, and they got you arrested. Tell us a little bit about that in a sort of short form.
Well, you know, I go to almost of the HISC monthly meetings. I've been doing that for many years. And you can have your moment of speaking, one minute. And on this particular night, which was the January meeting, I did that. And the board was deciding on something really important, which was they were going to approve a billion dollars worth, eight hundred and seventy million dollars worth of contracts in retroactively without any real review because Miles asked them to do that, which is completely just like an abdication of their fiduciary responsibility. So they came out of closed, secret session after two and a half hours and voted to do this, which we knew that they would do, but it was disappointing nonetheless. And then the next moment, they, they were reading off a list of properties to sell, which was kind of very much a one-two punch of here's some horrible things we're gonna do because we don't have to answer to anybody. And that's when I yelled at them, you are so disappointing. And then I yelled, you are the most disappointing people. And I said something about, why don't you sell the Hattie Mae Administration Building while you're at it? And they started, you know, hustling me out of there. And I, I didn't make it easy for them because I dropped to the ground. And so then they handcuffed me. And I was very surprised by that. I thought I would just be forced to leave. But no, no, they escalated it and they arrested me for trespassing, not for disrupting, just literally straight up criminal trespass. And I, you know, had to go downtown to jail and the whole bit. So it was pretty, pretty hideous. It was a tremendous, tremendous escalation on their part for just me saying, you're the most disappointing people.
And that is how, that is how autocracy works, folks. We have an autocratic Independent School, Houston Independent School District, assigned by the governor. All the people who were voted in as board members, they were disregarded. And now the government controls our board through Miles. And anybody who talks about it, Sarah Terrell put her body on the line to say, no, we, we want to have input in this. And for that, she got arrested. But luckily, tell us some of the results that have occurred thus far.
Well, I spent eighteen hours in jail. So that was, that was pretty punitive, I have to say. And then they, the case was dismissed. I think that, you know, you guys talked about me on KPFT, and people were writing into the DA's office. And I think the DA was like, this is really not a, not a good case to be pursuing. So the case was dismissed about a week later. So that was good. But then the next month came along. And by the way, thanks to everybody who emailed and took part in that public outreach to the DA's office. So then a month later, I was signed up to speak at the next meeting in February. And I really thought they would stop me at the door before I tried to get into the boardroom. Because they have a, they have a security agent who, you know, warns you and stuff before you go into the boardroom. And I fully expected he stopped there, but actually, I got stopped by a letter. An email came that formally advised me that I was already a trespasser. So for the safety of the learning environment, I was prohibited from going to any HISC facility, including like a school, to pick up a kid or attend a play or anything. And especially, obviously, especially, I'm not allowed to go and speak publicly or participate in the public board meetings anymore.
In other words, you were banned from being able to participate as a tax Spain citizen of the Houston Independent School District, which is sad. But the one thing that I want to stress here to everybody that's listening, Sarah Terrell, she looked at a problem. She participated. She engaged herself. And what I am most happy about the outcomes thus far is that as an activist, the one thing that an activist wants to know, people that are putting themselves on the line, is that the community who they're serving has their back. And that's one thing. And Sarah just pointed out in her thank you to the community at large. Because in, especially in these times, we don't, we don't have to back down. But for those of us who put our bodies on the line, the community must be there. And the community, I want to tell you, Sarah, will always be there for you as you continue your, I don't want to say fight, but the necessary activism with a rogue Houston Independent School District. So we're kind of out of time here, so I'm going to ask you to give me a quick fifteen second closer.
Well, I just want to say, you know, having your free speech stymied as I have, as they've done by banning me from properties, it just feels really sinister and kind of scary. So, you know, we're in danger of losing our voices in terms of public speaking and free speech. So I encourage everybody to do more than just have other people's backs, but go out and speak yourself and use your voice, your public voice, while you still have free speech in this country. Because it's possible that we won't always have that to the extent that we do now. So it can be a little bit scary to lose it, especially as in my case, I've not lost it completely, but there's a dent in my free speech rights already. So I feel like I can say now from experience, we need to treasure those rights by using them right now.
Sarah Terrell, before, before I close here, I want to say, folks, those of you who can go speak at the board meeting, go speak and make sure each one of you say, release Sarah Terrell from what you have her on right now. She should be able to go speak to that board freely. Every single person that goes up there and speak should have that word at the tip of their tongue. Sarah Terrell, thank you so kindly for having been on Politics Done Right.
Thank you for having me, Egberto, and thank you for everything that you do.
You have a wonderful rest of your day. All right. All right, folks, I hope you enjoyed that. That's a good friend of mine who is an education activist here in Harris County. And she really keeps them on their toes. They tried to put one on her, but the community came to ensure that we were going to protect one of our own. We were going to protect one of our own. All right, let's see what else we got here in the, in the chat. Breach has something she wants me to put on the screen. And here we go with it on the screen. Señora Breach, it says.
Ensure that we were going to protect one of our own.
Oops.
We were going to protect one of our own. All right, let's see what else we got here in the, in the chat. Breach has something she wants me to put on the screen. And here we go with it on the screen. Señora Breach, it says. Ensure that.
Oh, wait a minute.
Protect one of our own.
What, what just happened there? I just, I remember that, that when I put certain things on the screen, that is what happens. But I forgot what I did to make sure that, that, you know, we didn't get that feedback loop. So let's do it again, one more time. I'm going to try to remember how do we not get that going? I think it has to do with, let's, let's try it again here and see if I can get the thing on, on the screen. There we go.
Do it again, one more time. I'm going to try to remember.
Okay, let's see if that solves the problem.
Get that going. I think it has to do with, let's, let's try it again here and see if I can get the thing on.
Anyway, I got it. I got it on the screen for a little bit. I need to figure out what I need to do with the screen area to make sure that that doesn't get retransmitted. I think it's getting retransmitted for some reason that I don't understand right now. And I'm going to try to fix that as we, as we speak here. Let's see if turning that down would make a difference. Let's see if that makes a difference. Guys, sometimes, it's sometimes things don't work as you expect them to work, you know, every now and then.
I think it's getting retransmitted for some.
Nope, that's not it. All right. Okay, 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 okay. Track two is going to, the, let's see why is that doing that track two is going to line one? Okay, I'm not sure what's happening with my setup today, but I will surely, ah, I think I may, ah, I figured it out. I figured it out. I figured it out. Here we go now. This is what Breach has. There we go. There we go. On the screen, no problem. There you go. Senator Tammy Duckworth catches Trump's Defense Secretary Hexeth in a bald-faced lie. And how do we know that? Because we're looking at it right now. It says Tammy Duckworth, SecDef, which is the Secretary of Defense, Hexeth say he doesn't know if Russia invaded Ukraine. This is you. Tracking Russia invasion of Ukraine. Imagine that. He said he doesn't know, but he was on Fox News, pointing out on Fox News that this is how Russia invaded Ukraine. Take a look at your screen for those who are looking at the screen. He's on Fox News as a host because, you know, he's not really, or should never have been considered a Defense Secretary because he's too, well, let's not go there. But check that out. He is saying tracking Russia invasion of Ukraine on his show. So he knows that Russia invaded Ukraine. And when asked, he now can't answer because Donald Trump has, has, has his voice neutered. All right, for the second topic I want to go on right now, we had a call this morning from a person. First of all, before I go to that video, if anybody wants to call into the show in the next couple of minutes, give me a call if you, if there's anything that you want to add before we go on to the next video. So again, you can give me a call at 281-823-7747. Again, that number is 281-823-7747. If there's something that you want to say before we go to the next video, which will be concerning a government worker who explains to us her feelings as she got that fork in the road letter and the subsequent letters that come, that comes after that. So again, you can give me a call, 281-823-7747. I'm going to wait thirty seconds more. And if nobody calls, I'll play the other video. Breach MC Pisa Egberto Johnson claims town hall protesters paid by Democrats. So funny. He wants no more town halls. That is a shame. They're running scared. They are running scared. All right, let's, let's put that on the screen real quick. Read it a bit while I check to see if anybody is going to call in. Here we go on the screen. It says, Johnson claims town hall protesters paid by Democrats. Not true. This stuff is organic. The videos you saw of the town halls were paid for protesters in many of those places. Johnson told CNN Caitlin Collins in an interview Wednesday, these are Democrats who went to the events early and filled up the seats. He said, the source in a clip highlighted by Mediate. Collins interjected after saying the Republican leader couldn't argue they were all paid protesters. True, though, Mr. Speaker, a Republican acknowledged they were his constituents she encountered. Johnson seemed to brush off the comment. One Republican acknowledges they were constituents. That's fantastic. Okay. But they had Democrats come and fill the seats early, all right? Johnson said, this is an old playbook that they pulled out and ran and made it look like that's what was happening. No, no, that is what you guys did with the Tea Party. I remember 2010. That's what you guys did with the Tea Party. So we remember. Well, Ray Brackens is on the line. How are you doing, brother Ray?
I'm doing good, brother Egberto. I want to answer to my, I was a little, I was a little lit this morning on the, on the morning chat. And I just wanted to reiterate, where's Turd Cruz?
I know, right?
Get him in a town hall somewhere.
Ah, he's running scared, so he doesn't want his name on the news because people are going to want exactly that. The guy is hiding. You notice that? I see.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's about what I would expect from a coward who let Donald Trump call his wife ugly and didn't, and just let him walk away. If it was me and that was my wife, like I said, he should have got slapped the way Will Smith slapped Chris Rock at the Oscars. That's the energy he should have brought every time he saw Donald Trump. But of course, he's not going to do that because he wants to bow down to power like the little lapdog that he is.
But you know, it makes him look weak because if somebody spoke against my wife, my daughter, my friends, I am right out there, ready to defend them. My first verbally, you know, I mean, yeah, we are ready. But no, he's not, he's not a real, you know what. But anyway, what else is going on, Ray?
Nothing much. I'm just really trying to figure out what's the next move. I mean, I've been watching our girl Jasmine Crockett do her thing. And I mean, we, I'm saying right now, if it's not a celebrity and there's no voter suppression involved, I feel like she's probably the best option at, for a Democratic presidential candidate as anybody. Because she's the only one that seems to have the ear.
Look, let me tell you, I, I, I am, I am with you on, I want these younger people to step up. Because first of all, on the Democratic side, all the older folks have proven to be wimps. The voice of our party is Maxwell. Did you see Maxwell on TV yesterday? Maxwell Frost on TV yesterday? What he did in that room. He took command of that room. Did you see how Crockett always takes command of the room? And AOC, AOC holds back and starts, she knows exactly how to hold back. And when she needs to be effective and come out there, she does it as well. We have a lot of young people in the, in the, in the field coming out. We just need to get rid of all those old folks that just can't seem to understand their time is over.
Yeah, and I mean, it's kind of sad because, you know, my congressman, Al Green, I like Al Green, but I feel like he's getting worn down. And somebody needs to take up the mantle eventually, you know. But I mean, he's been doing it so long, you know.
Right. Look, the responsible thing that a politician should do, Ray, a politician should be responsible and create a bench. Somebody that doesn't only care for themselves. You know, I am very politically active. And I have so many people that have been saying, why don't you run for something or whatever? I am too damn old. It's your time, Ray. I would, look, don't you think I would, sometimes I think, oh, I would love to go ahead and do the congressional thing. After I've done with my business and all of that, hey, I could go up there and do the congressional thing, right? But no, I am too damn old. It is your time, Ray. It is time for Patrick Magnner. It is time for all you youngsters. We are ready to serve you guys. And I say that from the depths of my heart. We are ready to serve that younger generation that has a lot of new ideas and they have the energy and all of that to go out and do it. We need to get rid of, it'll make a better country. Not only that, a lot of the old thoughts and the old things that these guys think about would be gone. Because you guys think differently, which is a good thing. Well, I think, I'd like to think that I think like you guys. I just have the age, but I don't have the mentality of the old folks, you know. But you get my point.
Hey, y'all, as young as you feel, Egberto, and you're about thirty years young in my mind.
Thank you. I love you for that. I love you for that. But you know what? If you don't have anything else, let me go ahead and play the video. Anything else you want to say before I move on to that, my brother?
No, my brother, I'm gonna just keep on watching. And thank you for the platform. I appreciate all the videos that you're pulling out. So.
Thank you very much, my friend. You have a great, great time. Okay? Thank you very much. Hey, but before I do that video, I want to respond, Lee Grant, okay? I, you know, I like you. I think you're older. And I think a lot of the things you say is because of how you were reared. And I think a lot of the feelings that you have about what makes a person intelligent, smart, et cetera, is also how you were reared. And I, you know, I want to give some mention to what you just said there. Crockett is probably a little too street to have nationwide appeal. Okay? That's a black woman out of, I think she's out of St. Louis, if I remember correctly, a lawyer, an Air Force, an Air Force officer, and many other things. Very, very, very smart and thinks quickly on her feet. She has a southern accent. You call her too street to have nationwide appeal. But Donald Trump, who goes on national TV and cusses, he goes on national TV and lies profusely. He goes on national TV. He goes on national TV and act like a, a mentally incapacitated person. He's not very smart. He's also a convicted felon. A judge also said that he raped a woman. All these things, he has several baby mamas. That describe the person you voted for for president. Therefore, anybody who looks at Crockett and say, my God, Crockett is a bit too street for America to elect. It has to be a racist because you will be saying in reality, she is too black to be elected. Because if somebody with the flaws of Donald Trump, somebody with the flaws of Donald Trump, which Crockett has no flaw of that nature. That is what you're saying, brother Magner. Come on in, my friend.
Good to, good to hear from you and good to hear your, uh, I'm trying to lock up my trucks.
Yeah, no problem, my friend.
Everybody, um, we're talking, we're, we're, yeah, that, the, uh, that street comment kind of got me too. Um, and we have, we have to kind of look at how the, the folks that, that look at other people that way. I mean, what exactly does street mean? And what, what would that keep somebody from making a good choice? Um, I, I, I sent a couple of links, um, racism, uh, in one of them is, is pretty much outlined as another form of stupidity. Um, I couldn't get it to go through on, uh, uh, YouTube. So I sent it, um, under, uh,
By email.
Other name on, uh, Twitch. Yeah, no, Twitch, I, I send it to everybody.
Hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. Let me, let, let, hold on a second, hold on a second. Let me get another call in. Uh, hi, Alistair. Alistair, let me connect all the calls, okay? Hold one second, Alistair. All right. Let me just make sure, is Alistair on right now?
I am.
Alistair, are you there? And Patrick, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, Patrick, go ahead and con, continue, Patrick.
Well, I, I find out that people that, that have an issue with sexism or racism, that they've drawn a correlation are typically undereducated and, and have, uh, intellectual difficulty. And they'll, they, studies also point out that people that are, tend to have left wing, uh, views, people that are like, um, uh, Noam Chomsky, um, are, are more intelligent. The, the folks that are analyzing people and saying things like, well, she's too street for this or something like that. People that can't, that, that don't understand that, that a black woman can be very intelligent and can, and can be successful are not intelligent. There's, 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 there's a, 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 a marked stupidity about that. And unfortunately, because we've had a decline in, in education and for the last forty years, and we haven't been funding it, we're surrounded by people like this. People that can't think for themselves, people that, that can't analyze the world around them.
You're absolutely right. And to think, but, but, but the really, the, the comment gnawed at me. But before I give any further commentary, let me go to, to our sister Alistair to make her point. Come on in, Alistair.
I swear to God, the ignorance in that comment makes my skin crawl. And for it to be twenty twenty five and the mentality likely is displaying to be in full view and he thinks it's okay to say it, even if it's a nice way to say it, too street? Dude, you have no clue. You have no freaking clue. And you are an embarrassment to this nation. Shame on you.
It's, it's thinking like that, that it's the reason why we're losing a democracy.
Right. And, and by, by the way, the, the thing about it though, uh, Patrick is it's by design, right? I pointed out, I don't remember if it's on KPFT or I did a blog or what I said. I said that white supremacy hurts both white people and everybody else. It, it, it's just a ma, a way of getting people to have these frictions and divisions among different people so that they could, so that you don't see those who are really, right? And that's what they're doing. Like for you to think, look, look, uh, Crockett is much more qualified to be president of the United States than Donald Trump. There's absolutely no doubt about it from the level of intellect. Because you know, what, what a lot of people don't know, right? Is you don't have to know everything. You just have to know how to learn and you just have to know how to go to find information. And unfortunately, that is something that Donald Trump doesn't know how to do. That's why he got a lot of people killed with, uh, with COVID. That is why he's likely gonna get a lot of people killed with these other diseases that just may show up, starting with measles. But anyway, continue, uh, Alistair, anything else you want to say?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you, sis.
I am, I am reserved enough to not.
Thank you very much, sis. But you know what? Uh, I, I, it is important that we actually, things like this, I think, has to be pointed out immediately because that kind of a commentary, you, you know, again, not, you know, when you, if I, let me ask you something. Both of you or everybody that's listening. If I said, man, that guy is a felon. Man, he has three baby mamas and oh my God, he cheated people out. He, 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 he went ahead and he created a fake, a fake five oh one C three and took the money that a lot of people donated to. Just, I just mentioned those words. That man, what image shows up in your head of that man? If immediately a black man showed up because you heard baby mama, because you heard all those things that are stereotypically attacked, attached to, to black men, right? And it's funny because that is a stereotype that should apply to all men because all men do that, right? Or not all men, I mean, I, 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 men of all persuasions do that. But the trick there is what I just said. Several baby mamas cheating people out of their money, convicted felon. It all applies to Donald Trump. He could become president doing that. Do you think Obama could? Patrick?
No.
I had no.
And that's the point.
I'll point out too, that it's for, it, it, it's for socioeconomic reasons, but you can Google, is a black man a, a good father? And they, they, you will get study after study that indicates they are better than white men at being fathers.
You know, let me tell you something that's,
The only reason why they fail is because they're put in cages.
Exactly. It, it is funny because I, I did, my daughter, right, was, we were, she came into my home studio and I have a twelve minute video to play, so I'm gonna have to cut this in a minute. But my daughter came into the studio, right? And we were talking and then they, they, something came on, on TV about single parent household and black men or something. And I looked at her and I said, Ashley, think about all the black men in your life. Because we, we are a multicultural family. We have all kinds of people in the family. But I told her specifically, look at all the black men you know. Please tell me one of them that you, that doesn't treat their kids right or their wives, right? And she kept on going down, man after man. And so, oh my God, Dad, it's a, the stereotype is not real. And I'm like, that's my point. The point is you can make anybody the exception, right? Anybody. Exactly. But anyway, thank you, guys. I gotta play the other video, but you know, you got, love you all. Let me get to the other video, all right? Thank you.
Give me ten, ten seconds. Give me ten seconds.
Go ahead, absolutely, absolutely. Go ahead, my brother.
Okay, okay. I, I, I want to point out, we are talking about intelligence. Brian, the other day, uh, could not divide eight hundred eighty by ten and get eighty eight. He, he said that,
I know.
Eight hundred eighty, yeah, okay. So the, so we're talking about the intelligence of a white man there. All right, let's talk about somebody, some, some other folks here. We're getting excited for Doge finding four million dollars in quote unquote waste with, and we're not even defining the waste. To pay that four and a half trillion dollar budget cut would take one hundred thousand mistakes like that found just to break even. These people can't do math. Are we gonna find a hundred thousand?
No, no, but, but it's even, it's, it's even worse than that because it costs for the money that they are finding, right? The disruption that they're causing likely cost more than the, that supposed waste they're finding. And you brought, you brought up a subject a few weeks ago on KPFT where you said the reason they don't fix certain parts of social security is that the money they're losing is much less than it would cost them to fix it, plus the amortization of said fix. And it's all about numbers. So that's a problem with not, right? That's a problem with not, right? Thank you very much. Let me play the other video. You have a wonderful day, Patrick.
Thank you.
And Alistair.
You too.
Bye bye. All right, let's go ahead and play that video, guys. Let's get moving with it. And here we go. This morning, we got a call to the, uh, to my morning KPFT ninety point one FM show from a government worker, of course, who received one of the fork in the road letters, emails from Musk and his, uh, his team, his teams of what I call team of criminals. But, um, what she said is that there's a whole lot of these emails that are pretty much harassing type emails, emails to attempt to demoralize the workers, et cetera. So I want you to listen to this conversation because first of all, it hurts to understand that it's your own government that's doing this to the loyal employees of the government. It shows that these people have, it's not about having a heart, but it's just about them being inhumane. Check this out and then we'll take it on the other side. Let's go to Stacy. Come on in, Stacy.
Good morning, uh, first time caller. I just wanted to say I really appreciate you all. So, um, and I appreciate, uh, I think it was Neil, uh, saying, if that's, if I'm remembering names correctly, about practicing solidarity, which I felt was a good reminder for those of us who are feeling apathetic for tomorrow's economic pause. And, um, I also wanted to say, I really appreciate, you know, y'all's voice, the local radio, but particularly because, uh, with this administration and this climate, NPR, who, you know, typically public radio, fairly independent voice. I've been somewhat disappointed in the reporting and partially I kind of want to, if others are feeling the same way, it's because they're being investigated by the FCC under this administration. So like you said, not always the reporter's fault, but it is something that I have been noticing. This more leaning right sort of reporting and it has been somewhat disappointing. So to find your show on my, um, new commute to work every day because I'm a federal employee, having to return to office, an hour and a half commute, so three hours total. So yes.
Let me ask you a question, uh, uh, first of all, thank you for the kudos, Stacy. But my question is, how do you feel about your current job, uh, with the federal government? Do you feel any pressure right now? And did you sign the letter? Or rather, did you reply to the, uh, letter?
The, the five, the five bullet points or the, there's been multiples. Every day it's something new to make our lives difficult and our jobs very difficult. Um, the fork in the road for people who took the offer for the Vera, the, the early retirement option, they, their last day is tomorrow. And so we are losing some really wonderful people. And I understand everyone's situation is different, so there's no judgment there. Um, especially the early retirement option. I get it. Uh, if I had that opportunity, I would probably take it as well. But, um, it's difficult. It's been hard every day and they, the unfortunate thing is they're trying to demoralize us and it's working. You know, they're stopping purchase cards. So while we're returning to office, you're no longer allowed to make purchases to, you know, better our office environment. So that means chairs, desks, things like that. So it is, every little day is there, they are trying.
Well, I want you to know something, Stacy. You have our support, uh, uh, whatever that is. You have our support. I'd like you to keep checking in because we want, we want to make sure that we have all of your folks backs because you're not gonna be standing alone. Uh, we are in this not to just appease, but we're in this to make change. So thank you so kindly for your call. Thank you for what you are doing for us as a government employee. I revere teachers, I revere our government employees because you make this society function. Thank you so kindly, sister.
Thank you. Yes, for trying, we're trying very well for the American people.
Absolutely. Uh, we, we, we know that. We know that. Those of us here know that. You have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you, you too. Bye bye.
Now, I, there, there are two things that I, I am happy first, that she realizes, that Stacy realizes that those of us in the progressive movement intend to have solidarity with all government employees irrespective of their ideologies. Because we know what Donald Trump and Elon Musk is doing. We understand what they're doing. And I want the rest of America to understand this is all a distraction. But it's a distraction with a purpose. And here's distraction number one. Distraction number one is as we're laying off government workers, all the attention is gonna be on Doge and what they're doing to, uh, lay off workers and what they're doing for supposedly waste and efficiency and fraud. That is what they want your eyes on. Because at the same time this is occurring, we have a derelict Congress that is doing its utter best to give away your hard earned dollars to their wealthy benefactors. So they don't want you in the mix. They don't want you calling your congressperson. They want you calling your congressperson about your friend and your auntie that's getting laid off, et cetera. It's not that it's gonna help, but they want your focus somewhere else as they continue to figure out how they're gonna pilfer your Medicaid and other governmental programs, other support programs, other, one of these. So they want your eyes off of the ball. The second thing is they want to have those remaining employees at, that work for the federal government. They want those people to be fearful. They want them to think every time they're going to work, make sure no matter what you do, is always in loyalty to the Trump administration. Because you know what? These guys came in, just like Ronald Reagan came in and laid off Pat Coe. That is a airline pilot, uh, rather, the, uh, the, the aircraft traffic controllers back in nineteen, I believe it was nineteen eighty one, if I remember correctly. Just like he came in and to hell with it, he just laid a whole bunch of folks for the FAA off. That is what Trump wants to imply, but he wants to do it to a greater degree to institute that fear in government employees. Don't let it work. Don't let it work. Yes, some of you will be sacrificial lambs. I'm sorry. Because the fact of the matter is as more of you leave, as more of the experienced people say to hell with it, I'll just go ahead and retire. I'll just go ahead and do whatever. As more people do that, government will start to decay and decay and decay. And guess what? Guess who's in power? Republicans are in power in the Senate. Republicans are in power in the House. Republicans are in power in the executive. Republicans are even in power in the Supreme Court. They control everything. And if, if progressives remind folks, the, the first two years of the Biden administration, and as much as it wasn't the best for progressives that were progressive, we got a lot more than we've gotten in from any president since Ronald Reagan with regards to the policies that were set up and instituted. It is on us now, and that means progressives. It's on us now to get the narrative right. It's on our listeners now to ensure that these means of communications that we are using to en, to enlighten, educate and make people understand what's occurring right now, that we can stay in existence to tell it. And there are two obstacles, one immediate and one that is forthcoming. The immediate one is, look, we, those of us doing independent media needs to be funded. So therefore, if you are watching us on YouTube, join at, at whatever level you can because we, we have to, we have to do this, we have to be able to keep up. If you're looking at us anywhere, support us however you can. In the case of this particular program, you can subscribe to our news, become a paid subscriber to our newsletter, politicsunright.com/ Politics Unright dot com slash newsletter, politicsunright dot com slash newsletter. Consider doing that. You know why? We have to be around before the next step occurs. And you know what the other step is? The other step is the actual shutdown. First of the airwaves, because the FCC controls everything. But when it comes to the internet, having Elon Musk control Twitter, X, having Zuckerberg control Facebook, uh, WhatsApp, Instagram, and who knows who will control TikTok. Our, our information methodologies are gonna have to change. One of the things with newsletters is it's done via email and get, et cetera, which has lesser capabilities of corruption. So please, please, we, in order to move forward, we have to have all of our avenues open. As you can see, they're taking these things down one at a time, one at a time. The government employees make them so fearful of us that they, they fly straight. They stay in line. The media, we will start by taking away licenses, et cetera. We never know when that's gonna happen. NPR is running scared. You heard what Stacy had to say. Uh, KPFT and Pacifica still, because we are completely and entirely funded by the, the regular folks that are listening, still have much control. Those of us as well that are doing YouTube, Instagram, Telegram and all these other avenues, we're still okay. But again, the oligarchs are lurking. The oligarchs are lurking. Besus now says he will control the editorial page. And you can only speak about free markets and freedom. What that means is you can only speak about oligarchic free markets and oligarchic freedom. Folks, let's not wait till it's too late. Let's make sure that we share this with our friends. Make sure that we have the right narratives. Make sure that we support these networks. Make sure that we share, support, uh, fund, all these things put together. The independent media is all we've got now. If you watch the press conference a few, uh, days ago with Donald Trump, it's clear. The mainstream media has already been captured. Absolutely so, absolutely so. Anyway, we got a limerick. It hasn't, it has been a while. So because it has been a while, maybe that's why our brother made it this long. So here we go. Elon and his Musk rights keep breaking government things. While Trump on his golden toilet is MAGA's king of kings. But who will stop the bombing and the shooting? Make peace in Ukraine between Zelensky and Putin. If about this country you care, your rare earth metals you share, it's only fair. It's hard to know what's real, what's just for show, which fascists are puppets and which pull the strings. All of us in the end pay the price for the stupidity of oligarchs and their morbid, morbid stupidity. But you say you're young, white and healthy and you want to be obscenely wealthy, like those tech bros extremely stealthy. Then just must show them you are a true believer. Bow down in adoration to fearless leader. March in strict formation, support mass deportation, the late export of the nation. Be nice to the men of ICE, aid and a bed billionaires who want a tax-free paradise. Don't think twice, but be willing to make any sacrifice. Accept the roll of the dice and pay any price as long as it's not you or me. While from California to Florida, from Maine to Tennessee, the misery of the poor, sick and elderly. It's plain for all to see, but it's not your worry. Why should you stop when you are in a hurry to make it to the top? Or the crypto pyramid scheme where that cream of the crop still believe in the American dream. But not for those who lose their jobs and home. So this is our advice to you. Don't sigh, don't moan. You're all alone against whatever living brings. Just put your nose to the grindstone, tighten your belt and pull yourself up by your very own shoe strings. Damn. Man, that was a good one, uh, Tom C. But it's always you, Tom C. Anyway, folks, uh, that is about the show that we've got today with finishing up with that one from Tom C. All right, what is the deal with Bruce? Did you say Bruce? Did you say Bruce said something? Let me see if I can find Bruce. That, that limerick was from Tom C, guys. That was a good one, Tom. What can I say? Uh, that was a very, very good one, Tom C. Anyway, folks, we gotta get out of here, but before we get out of here, wanna invite all of you. Those of you who have the wherewithal to do so, to please support the program however you can. You can support the program by going to politicsunright dot com slash newsletter, politicsunright dot com slash newsletter. Of course, you can also become a patron by going to politicsunright dot com slash patron. So let me go ahead and start again. Uh, politicsdoneright dot com slash patron. I should put, I should have put that one on first. Support us via our Patreon, politicsunright dot com slash patron. But again, uh, like I mentioned before, uh, those of you who support us through our newsletter, becoming paid supporters of our newsletter, starts to build the infrastructure that we need to get the job done. So here we go, politicsdoneright dot, oops, come on there, put it in there. Politicsunright dot com slash newsletter. Okay, it's four o'clock. I gotta get out of here. My name is Egberto Willis. Love you all. My name is Egberto Willis. This is Politics Unright. And you guys know how I end this, baby. I am what? We spend a lot of time deconstructing the news, trying to, trying to parse it into a form that everybody can understand. We try to find those little nitpicks where, uh, it goes, it flies above the fray, et cetera. If you really like these videos that we do, I want to ask a big favor. Please go ahead, number one, subscribe to our channel and number two, please join if you can. Thank you so kindly for watching. Keep watching. Please remember to share. We must populate the entire internet with our progressive message, a message that we know is what most Americans say that they want. So help us, please, join.